Not a forum required. Hopefully, the other two commissioners will be along. We have three here, we have a forum, but that's not required. But we do have agenda for the workshop session, four to five o'clock. And with that, we do have agenda items. And we'd like to welcome those that have come to be on the agenda this evening. And first of all, I understand that Andy Cabels has to be out, just make up games for his children that snowed down their thing. I think our county manager, Greg Cabels, is going to cover the federal lands access grant.
Thank you. Wanted to let the board know that as requested, you know, over the last couple of years, we've been working to try to get a helipad at the Sully overlook. That piece of property is in Swain County, but Graham County Emergency Service Personnel, we have to close down the 400 there to land a helicopter pretty often. It's an ideal spot. Andy Cabels, our Economic Development Director, wrote a federal lands access grant that had to be submitted by Swain County because that's where the helipad would be located. And that grant was awarded. The share of the match that would be required for Graham County to put this helipad in is it's a $32,000 grant. Our share of the match, Andy and kind, would be $4,100. Now, the work that DOT is doing up there, clearing all of that, those stumps, any sort of, the work that Andy did in writing the grant, all of that can be considered in kind. So you could see the amount of what would be our match would be reduced, maybe even eliminated. And we would have the access to a helipad there for Emergency Service Personnel. He wanted me to bring you up today on that. I provided you on your desk a list of some of the updates for the Economic Development Department. Starting with number one, I'll go through these real quick, just so we can get to the other items on the agenda. The part of grant was submitted on January 31st. We had over 160 people attend the public hearing and got an additional 485 signatures of support for the project. Andy was able to get a grant from the newest business that opened up in the county and within the town of Robbinsville, the hub for $10,000 from the rural center. He has been instrumental in helping the mortars out with the treehouse cabins that are going to be opening up this spring. Finances of this business was provided through a program in the eastern part of Carolina. And number five, some of you, Mike, you may be aware of the Angel Investment Fund that's been started in Southwest Commission to help with business startups. This was the branch out of the Vire Economic Development Director, Andy Cabels. He's the one that planned and saved, he got the wheel rolling on that. Could be very, very beneficial for economic development startups, things like that for our region. So it's kind of exciting to see those things coming about. He is working hard with the Eastern Band to start a business in Graham County that's not necessarily casino related. On February 7th, he was asked by the vice chief and the chief to go with them to a meeting to do, to meet with folks who are doing the overhaul for the Oak Ridge Movement Plan. It's a $6.5 billion project, and the Eastern Band is wanting to try to establish a company within Graham County that can supply components to this river. It's a multi-year project, multi-billion dollars. So that's something that he is working on actively. Could be some potential high-paying jobs there. Again, we're still working on the fiber rockets for Graham County. Currently working with Boston West and Cherokee Preservation Foundation to get a little fiber on massive range and fiber rocket capabilities down the frontage. The continuous improvement training that was funded through the EDC has been completed. There were several businesses, other businesses outside of Stanley that participated in that continuous improvement. And some of the best and most positive results came out of Fontana Bill Resort. They thoroughly enjoyed that training and have even scheduled additional training on their own for future decades. As they say, it'd be really, really helpful business. And he's currently working with our sheriff's department to find grants to help with their mission in public safety for the county. So with that, I'm just going to give you that update. But he had on there for the helipad, which is something I know that's near and dear to a lot of our Emergency Service Personnel. We did find a grant to be able to be able to build a nice helipad at that location before it was needed much.
One of the things that I'd make comment about, and I don't want to stretch out all the time, that we have here, you know, the work in 22 counties is something, you know, exemplary. I think, you know, really trying to work together on those kinds of things. And I guess, Keith, if anybody, you know, that's here right now, you know, the need for that was quite apparent. Any of us that have been through there know I'm shutting down the highway for a helicopter to land. It's not only that of an inconvenience, but it's a safety factor as well. So I'm glad to see that this came out. And, you know, I'm thankful that, you know, our EDC person was able to help them in writing and being able to get this to happen. Now DOT will just get all that garbage off the site. That might be one act, but, you know, it's happening, and I hope that that will go on. One other thing, you may not know this, Greg, is the issue of the part of grant. Do you know a date on that?
I don't have anything concrete as far as whether we made any decision. I imagine it'll probably be closer to the late spring, early summer months before they'll actually convene and start making some decisions on who's going to be picking, who they pick for that grant. We put together another outstanding package. We got a lot more community support this time for the grant, which is going to, should help out, you know, quite a bit. And, you know, we're contacting the different members of the part of board, introducing ourselves. I suppose most of them are new members, recently appointed. And so it's a lot of effort. And as you all know, in the coming months, there'll probably be a request for some travel to go down there to meet, to lobby Graham County on behalf of that grant. But as we've seen before, it's well worth the time and energy to go down there. It's time you have to go downstate to get what you need.
One thing, too, that I'd like to go back to is the $10,000 for the hub. Were those monies, did those come out of the restructuring rural economic development?
It was awarded outside of, you know, it was an application that was submitted prior to the restructuring, but the grant award came out of the new, I guess, organization that has been formed.
And just kind of catch everybody up here that's here. Right now, they have two, they have two state lawyers that are trying to wrangle out those that had already been proved. And I think there are over 500 grants that were in the old rural, rural developer, the rural center. And of all things, they decided to have lawyers to make a determination whether those are... And we have $188,000 still hanging.
We do. We have a $188,000 compensation grant that has been signed off by the governor, and it's currently being reviewed by a panel of attorneys before we have, you know, the direct go-ahead startup implementation. So once we have more clarification on the best direction to go with that, I'll be updating the board, or Eddie will, on how we need to proceed.
Okay, great. Gentlemen, you all in here for comments or questions? All right, thank you, Greg. All right, this time, continuing on the agenda, we'd like to recognize Mr. Denise Coleman with the Evergreen Foundation. Welcome.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity to come and share a little bit about the Evergreen Foundation with you. My name is Denise Coleman, and I've worked with the foundation for just about a year. I've just been hired to do some public relations, some communication outreach, primarily to the provider community, to make sure that the providers in our seven western counties are aware of funding available through the Evergreen Foundation. Are you all familiar with the Evergreen Foundation? Okay. It was started back in 1977 by the Board of Directors, a Smoky Mountain Center, or Smoky Mountain Mental Health at the time, as a way to hold funds that could later be used to support services in our seven western counties. So, okay, that was the kind of gist of why it was started. Right now, the Evergreen Foundation is trying very hard to get the word out to make sure that providers know that funding to supplement some of the services that have been cut or changed over the last couple of years is available. We've developed a rack card, and that's in front of you. And this is primarily just to get information out. It has the website on it where providers or anyone can go to find out a little bit more information about the foundation. And the other thing, and it's the first year for this, the Evergreen Foundation, we started back in 1977, and this is the first year for an annual report. We wanted to make sure that we are providing information to the seven counties about the activities of the Evergreen Foundation. Inside that annual report, you'll find a list of Board of Directors, there's someone from each county, except Cherokee on this one, but John Snow has joined the board from Cherokee County. So we have someone on the board from each county. The next page goes into the assets. The Evergreen Foundation has about 14 and a half million in investment income or investments right now, and 5 and a half million in property. The properties are located throughout western North Carolina, and the properties themselves are also to support people with intellectual and developmental disabilities, behavioral health, or substance abuse issues. They are rented to organizations or to individual consumers or families that have someone in their family or someone that they support. There are some group homes and some programs like that that are in Evergreen properties. The next page goes into the income and expenses for the year. A little over 2 million in income and about a million in expenses. Most of the expenses is related to depreciation, the grants. Right now, administration, legal, and audit fees are extremely high. We're hoping that will come down in the future. The grants that were issued this past year, these are the agencies that were providing grants. Some of them serve seven counties, some of them serve three or four counties, and some of them are grants for individual counties. And I think there are at least three or four that are providing services here in Graham County. I know the 30th Judicial District, DVSA Alliance, Appalachian Community Services, Haven, and, oh, Shared Vision Consulting. So hopefully that we're touching and at least providing some services in every county. The cash grants for this past year have equaled $237,412. And we decided we couldn't really be as clear on exactly how much went to each county. So what we did was develop a color wheel or a wheel or a graph to show which went to which priority areas. And as you can see, a lot of the funding is going into mental health and substance abuse, which seems to be the greatest need right now. The next pages are a message from our Board of Directors, Marty Heidaker. And he kind of goes into some of the changes and things that are going on with Evergreen. We're really trying to be more of a community partner and to truly look at the needs in our seven western counties that aren't being met and be able to meet those needs now. This year alone, already, in three, let's see, we had three grant periods, we have provided $370,000 in grants. And there's $400,000 that will be allocated in our March meeting. As you can see, there's a lot of money that is available. And like I said, I'm trying very hard to make sure our providers in the seven western counties are aware of the funding and what they can do to make sure that the needs of the people that we serve are met. Any questions?
Do you have a record of this from overdose in this county?
No, I don't.
Do you have a need in any county?
Well, that wouldn't be something I would keep. I'm pretty much public relations and this is for a small foundation that, you know, if there was a need and you had somebody that wanted a grant to maybe look at that, that certainly might be a priority to look and see what we can do about overdose, that sort of thing. I think there are statistics, I know the police departments are keeping more of those because, especially with prescription drug problems.
Yeah, very.
I'm just going to ask one question. You know, in order to qualify to put in application for the grants from this organization, are there certain given, so you have to be a certain flavor of this, that, or the other to apply?
You just have to.
Status or...
You just have to. The need that you're meeting must be developmental disability, behavioral health, or substance abuse. That has to be your focus. And that's why the line was set up, to meet those needs. So it's open to all providers. Some of the funds have been used as match for, like, their grants, like a crime commission grant or something like that, in order to meet the match for, I think one was for defensive violence and people with disabilities. So there, you know, there's a lot of matching possibilities, too, if there's grants that you wanted to apply for through other organizations.
Okay. And you would be the point person?
You could, you could contact me. On the Sound Nation website, there is a person that is currently over the grant process, and the grants would actually be uploaded and sent to her right now. But if they had any questions or anything, my phone number is also on the website, and I'd be glad to talk to anyone about it.
Thank you for the information. Anyone have any further comments or questions for the other lady? Ms. Coleman?
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks very much. Thanks for coming out. All right, this time, we'll go ahead and recognize Ms. Shelley Foreman, as someone that I've known better through the years I've just spent in this building this evening. Ms. Foreman's going to come forward, and welcome.
Thank you.
Of course, to be a reporter, please.
One of the things that I did was I had sent some information and I, from the meeting that was in your packets, that I had a few brief reports that just came in, so I went ahead and laid those on your table. I hope that was okay. And one of the things I would say is that you, as a Board of Commissioners, should be very appreciative of the consistent and really hard work that both Chair Edwards and your County Manager, Greg Cabels, have done in working with Smoky. Of course, Chair Edwards, you've been just been on our board off and on for many years.
Since 2000, still.
Yeah, okay, yes. And we have loved to have you, and Greg, you're a recent addition. And then, as we, as you know, in the last year, Western Highlands Network, which is the LME that manages Medicaid funds for the western part of the state from Bunkland County West, lost their contract to manage Medicaid. So Smoky Mountain Center assumed that responsibility by the state, and we now manage Medicaid services for a 23-county area. As part of that, in the legislative session as of last year, the state assembly decided to restructure the way that LME, that as a LME, we're the person that manages all the funds for mental health, substance abuse, for intellectual and developmental disability services. We provide funds to providers in this county and all of our 23 counties to provide the services that are necessary. But the legislature decided to change the framework of the area board, as you would call it. Up until that time, we had a board that consisted of a county commissioner from each county and an at-large member. When the general assembly restructured that, the board was restructured so that it had designated categories. And that was because they felt that there needed to be people who had a greater level of expertise in managed care, because we were managing Medicaid funds. So one of the things that I had put in your packet was a slate of the new Smoky Mountain Center board. And I know that it was one of those issues that was very hard for both the Smoky Board and the old Western Highlands Board to contend with, because we have had a long and strong history of having commissioners on our board. What we chose to do is to meet the requirements as outlined by the law of the state of North Carolina, that use all of our eight at-large positions. Those positions are now filled with either commissioners from the old Smoky Board or county managers which had served on the Western Highlands Board. We are developing a system of rotation. The first board meeting will be Friday, and they will have one, two, and three-year stagger terms, so that all the counties will be able to have representation as we move through your board membership. The other thing that was created as part of that legislation, which was opposed by many of our board members, was this was the legislation to restructure the board. The one thing that was created, though, was a county commissioner advisory council. And that would be a council made up of representatives from each county who can select a county commissioner or county manager, doesn't mean, I'm sure, to be on an advisory council to work with our Board of Directors to ensure that the needs of each community are understood. Now, one of the things that we do as a public local management entity is that we have staff here in Graham County. We fund Appalachian Community Services as your major comprehensive provider. They still operate out of the old Smoky building, and they provide a full range of mental health and substance abuse services. We also have providers here who provide services to people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. But Smoky, as a manager, also has staff that work with individuals. We have people that are called care coordinators. Every person who has a developmental disability has a staff member from Smoky who works with them to help develop their plan, to make sure that they have the services they need, and works with the family and the care providers to make sure that everything is going smoothly.
Is there an age limit on that developmental?
Another agency serves children under three.
And other than that, no?
No, it's, you know, obviously, there's certain criteria for having an intellectual or developmental disability, but if you qualify, you have a care coordinator, as well as service providers to meet your needs. It could be anything from mental retardations, cerebral palsy, autism is probably one that you've heard more and more about. So they all have an individual care coordinator funded through Smoky to work with their whole system of care to make sure things are going well. We also have care coordinators who work with individuals who have had ongoing issues and are most seriously and persistently mentally ill, or people who have addiction issues that spend a lot of time going through emergency rooms, going through jails, really coming in and out of the system. So the new local management entity system with these care coordinators, they work to try to keep people out of hospitals, into services, and really wrap services around them. Now, one of the things that you probably have heard about, and I'm not really certain how much information has come out through the counties, you all know that Governor Cory announced a very large initiative called Partnership for Helping North Carolina some months ago. When he came into office, he announced this initiative, and his goal is to take all Medicaid funds in the state of North Carolina. Now, if you think about what we manage, it's a small percentage, just for people with mental health, substance abuse, or developmental disabilities. He's looking at creating a system where all the Medicaid funds for physical health, for dental health, for what we manage, are all put into one pot, so to speak, and that there will be a contracting process for statewide vendor, I think the number is one to three-ish, statewide vendors who would manage all the Medicaid resources in the community. This is a dramatically different direction than where the state had been going. We have a public management system, we've had it for many years. We thought that that was solidified with the mayor council, who was the secretary of everything we do as a governor. Governor Cory has really moved towards more of a privatization model, where there would be that with the bidding process. The secretary of the Department of Health and Human Services will be coming out very soon, mid-March, with a report on their recommendations for what this new model would look like. Of course, it was very disturbing to agencies such as ours, and probably another group you've heard of is Community Care of North Carolina, which is an organization similar to Smoky Mountain, in that they manage the medical, the medical patients who get Medicaid. And so there's been this public management system of medical care and then what we manage. And there's been a lot of controversy at the state level about doing this bid process.
Okay, so you're saying that we might, our direction in the state might be one to three vendors for the entire state?
That's, that's what was initially proposed, one to three-ish.
How many vendors do we have statewide now?
Well, right now, you have multiple primary care providers. Community Care of North Carolina manages Medicaid, or a variety of private insurance companies manage physical health Medicaid. For what we do in managing mental health, developmental disability, and substance abuse, you can see, I gave you this, this came out on Friday, this piece of paper. What the state has said is if we, as a public agency, will bring ourselves down to four consolidated entities, that they would consider allowing us to participate in the continued management of Medicaid. So one of the things that the state is doing is asking the current LMEs, which you can see here on this map, and I would look at the color versus the lines, because the lines don't necessarily follow. They are trying to get, for instance, Smoky Mountain Center to work with a LME called Partners Behavioral Health and Center Point, which goes all the way through Winston-Salem, all the blue counties would be the counties they want Smoky Mountain Center to consolidate with. You can see that each, there are four. And so what the governor has asked, and we've advocated for, to continue to be able to participate, is some openness to allowing us to manage Medicaid. And the way that could be accomplished, they are saying, is through this regionalization and consolidation. What Smoky has been doing is working with these two other local management entities that manage state Medicaid and local funds for these individuals. And we have looked at what processes we do similarly, what we do differently, things that can be standardized, things that we would need to do differently if we were to come together as an organization. Our board has a work group made up of board members and administration that have been working on this notion and working towards a date of 2016. We also have multiple work groups in functional areas that are working with these two other LMEs. And so one of the things I wanted to talk to you about today is just this notion of the state's direction in regionalizing public local management entities. And I'm going to stop there for a moment, see if you have any questions, or those who've been on our board have anything they would like to say. I know there, you know, it's one of those issues that has been very challenging.
Well, just one thing I would say, Shelley, and, you know, I had an opportunity to be there during this whole process of going from local to statewide and looking at this. Some of the concerns that I have, and just with this, recent articles, you know, I've been reading, and the government, Governor Cory himself has quoted as saying, maybe it's just too big to be successful, that's some of it. Now, but also the issue of that of Medicaid expansion, you know, there's less dollars where everybody can compete. And the notion that you're going to be able to meld ACA, you know, the Obamacare issue, along with, you know, the limited number of insurance companies that you have to be offered in the state of North Carolina. It seems that, you know, it's becoming, partly what I noted, it becomes a knot in a lot of sense. I think Coventry Hill is the only other outside of Blue Cross Blue Shield for the health side, as I understand. Is that right? Coventry?
Coventry.
And Blue Cross Blue Shield.
They, so far, in... And what we know to be true is that there's a heavy lobby group working to lobby for this privatization. I think one of the things that the governor has seen and the advisory group that's working at the state level is they first had this notion, as you said, of having like a statewide vendor or one or two, and that would be almost impossible to manage. There is no way that one vendor could have providers across 100 counties of North Carolina. So they're now looking at different ways of breaking it out. What I can say is that we remain committed to the public model of managing care because we provide people in your community who work with individuals and work with your agencies through interagency groups and collaboration. We also, if we have any cost savings in Medicaid, those go right back into services versus, you know, Coventry or Blue Cross Blue Shield where they basically, they pay our profits for their company. We're really hoping that the community care in North Carolina, which is the health sort of public manager, they've been very vocal, a lot of the primary care doctors and medical community are supporting the public management system. But we also know that we have an administration and a legislature that has moved more towards privatization. So what I can say is we remain committed through both our care coordination, through having our community collaboration department working with your local agencies, through having the board, through having the county commissioners advisory council, and having people like myself who come out and speak to you to remain committed to each of our counties. If the public system disappears, that disappears as well.
I have one question. We see the future merger between partners, Center for Smokey. How much of that process is currently underway or how much of managing this whole system is currently being processed or answered?
Right, right now is in the, it is a discussion and planning phase. The reports that I put in your packet go back like November, December, January. Like I said, we have a, our CEO, COOs, policies of the organizations and some of our board members are working together to talk about how this would look across the board. And then we have work groups who are talking, just trying to learn about each other, what we do, do we have the same information management system which we do? Do we have the same benefit plans for services? What providers do we have in common? The providers are talking amongst themselves about this and they're working together to talk, you know, across those three LMEs as providers, which maybe have been cross lines as well. So it's in the discussion phase. What I will tell you is until the governor and the secretary come out with a plan mid-March and we see how the legislature responds, we're sort of in a up in the air kind of situation. We really don't know, working with work and doing what we've been told to do by the state. This is what the state has asked us to do when they're our major funder, so we do what they have asked us to do. I think what will happen is that after March, the plan will come out, the legislature will either support it or not, there'll be a lot of discussion, and there would have to be a lot of planning in order to, for the state to change its Medicaid contract with the federal Center for Medicaid Services. They can't just do this on the whim, but the Center for Medicaid Services at the federal level would have to approve pulling all of these resources together, it just can't happen overnight. So I think you'll see more about the direction of the state and how the public LME fits into that picture once the secretary issues her report in March. And I think that's one of the, you know, the timing of getting an advisory council formed. I'm going to be coming out to talk, county manager and county chairs about how they would want to participate. Our board is meeting for the first time this Friday, the newly formed board, to talk about what's a very meaningful way to engage the counties in this process. So I think, you know, that will be a good time for us to be able to articulate what we would like the state to do based on the plan that they put out.
One other thing that sort of goes with what you may have just said, I know that there was some concern on the federal side with the model that North Carolina was, you know, decided to use where the federal side's more of a fee-for-service type model and whereas North Carolina shifted to a managed care model, more, more so. How are those issues being addressed and can they be resolved?
I think that obviously the state of North Carolina is called the Division of Medical Assistance that manages Medicaid for our state. They have to make regular reports, but what we're seeing nationwide is a trend of managing Medicaid because in almost every state across the nation, Medicaid costs continue to go up and it's an entitlement program. So if you qualify for Medicaid, you get services for Medicaid. And I think most states are really beginning to look, there are many states that are still due for service, many states are doing the managed care model like we are. I think that right now that the national trend is that there has to be a better way to manage Medicaid because of the huge cost that it raises on the national budget and then state budget accordingly. That's my sense of it.
Very, very complicated.
Very, very complicated. It's a time of a lot of, we're not sure where the governor is headed and, you know, a lot would have to happen to change where we are now. What I want you to understand is that we remain committed to serving the people of this community. We have an excellent provider, Appalachian Community Services here in Graham County that serves crisis services, has access to psychiatric care. They have a walk-in center, you know, the old Smokey Center. We have a good network of providers here and we'll just continue to work and ensure that people have the services they need in spite of the fact that state funds continue to be reduced as well. You know, we manage Medicaid, but a lot of the people in our community are what we call indigent. They don't qualify for Medicaid, but they don't have money to pay for services. So the state and local funds are what we have to use to pay for services for that group, and that's a large population in our area. So, you know, that's our most valuable resource and they continue to be cut.
Well, you know, one of the things that I see, you know, Graham County is one of 100 counties in the state of North Carolina. I mean, that's just the way that it works. And still, you know, I understand the provision and I've really struggled with wanting to understand the model. We have somebody in our community that needs immediate care, you know, if there's an involuntary commitment, you know, it has a whole story involved with how many thousands and thousands of dollars the county has to incur, expense for, and then, you know, having to take somebody to the end of the world in order to get the right kind of service. And the way I see it is that, that distance is just growing and that the way that things are going to happen is it's going to be data-driven and that where the numbers are, we're the predominant services that we locate. That's just economics. And that's one of the things that concerns me greatly is that, you know, a county that is barely 9,000 people and, you know, and so much for representation, I understand that all of this came about because of a bill that was passed with regard to, you know, conversion to a representative board of 21 instead of having representation per county. But, you know, I'm trying to understand, but it comes down to that again. And then we have the one provider in the area and, you know, in Graham County. And then you say, well, how is it the new providers would come on board or how do you qualify to bring those services that are somewhere else, bring them to here? And those are the challenges that I see. And you're right, Shelley, and I really appreciate Smokey Mountain Center, probably sitting now one of the most gentle-spirited people that they have in their point, I was to be sure of that, and it's not that I have a hatred for anybody, but I think you have a very intolerable job sometimes trying to go around and do what you're doing. But I really do appreciate you coming to bring this, we look forward to having you back. And I'm trying to understand it, I really, really am, and I'm trying to understand the logic in it, I'm just trying to understand the benefit, you know, when it comes down to it. So I'm not going to pour them out, you know, we're small, but we still have to live and eat and read, you know, and that kind of thing. And I'm afraid with the expansion and how big that it becomes, that there becomes less and less focus on that. And I haven't seen the, I haven't seen the balance in it yet. And you're saying that everything's up in the air and that's true. And I hope and pray that it does, I hope it works, you know, to where we have the services that we can have. So in the combination of realizing what other resources we have at our disposal, combine those and work together to get it done. But you've been around a long time, you've seen this grow, and I remember when I was just Smokey Mountain Health Mental Health, my wife worked as a receptionist, my mom did, worked with Duncan Sumter up at the old golf course at Brown Skrull, I believe it is. And I remember how it grew from there and then it grew and it grew and grew. So I want to see all that we can do, but I'll tell you, it looks like a formidable task.
I would agree with you 100% and I think it's, you know, the state is driving this process and we are really committed to trying to do it in a way that is responsive as a county. And, you know, we have that word from us and that we will be here and listen and have a process for hearing from every county. And I understand it's a huge challenge, it's hard for many of us old timers sometimes to, you know, look at this and say, wow, you know, this is a good thing or not, but what we know is that it's not really up to us, it's up to the state of North Carolina to tell us what, what we do and what we don't do.
I know there's a lot of ways to crunch numbers, I'm very aware of that. The last time I spoke with our sheriff's department here, deaths over 100 in this county were a little over one a month, and that's with 8,000 to 9,000 per cabinet, people living in this county.
And what, what we can do is too, when we send out, one of the things I would really like to do this year that we did more of in the past is help you see where your state dollar, where your state dollars and where your local dollars are being spent. I mean, Graham County is a lot of service for the amount of local funds and state funds by having Appalachian as well as a variety of other providers here who do different kinds of things. So we'll make sure that we have that information for you and the number, the number of people that are served in each of the communities.
Any other questions? You have some more for us?
No, I was going to say more to come in March, that's when, after we hear from, from the secretary, I'll be back to visit with you and county manager cable and see where we need to go from there.
All right, Shelley, I do appreciate it very much. And any other question or comment for Ms. Foreman? Thank you very, very much, appreciate it. Thank you both of you and have safe journey. With that now, we have about, I think it's about 15 minutes. Anyone else that have a couple of comments or anything during this period?
Chairman, I almost slipped away real quick and I think that.
Okay, I understand that. Okay, thank you very much.
No ballgame.
No ballgame. No, it's not going to be.
No, no.
This is a beautiful question. But with this, I would ask, in this few minutes that we do have, that we'd be mindful of some things that are probably going to come up during the, during the regular meeting. And one of the things there is with regard to our, with regard to our finance department, and I just want to put this in here as I can, I received a report from the finance department with regard how much work, workload is on that particular department. And I would like to entertain that as we can, is that begin looking about somewhere or the other to, to better manage the amount of work that's being done in that department. And one of the things is in this is to have a certified business person, and I have no one in mind, I have no idea about what it would even look like, but when I did look at that, and I'm sitting right here and I lost it, but there were a number of things that were pointed out about what goes on. And I want to go ahead and say this, is that our office staff, yes, we're a small county and yes, we have a lot of responsibility. One of the things about being a small county, it comes down to the fact is, is we have to make provision of the same services as the Charlotte Connect Department does. And we have to do it on the budget that we have from the taxpayers of the county.
On a 25% tax base.
On a 25% tax base, act long. And I think it's pretty darn good what we've done. But still, we have to go and look to everything that we can possibly do with the permission of the board, if you bear with me on this, I don't know if anybody else has received this. Ms. Clerk, have you seen, have you seen this document? But with this, I just wanted to give you an idea about our department and finance, the finance office. Besides all the, you know, the things that have to come around with audits, now I just want to read some of it. Accounts payable, payroll generation, payroll tax for minutes, retirement recording, 911 recording, budget monitoring amendments, month end close out of books, year end closing books, and then the daily, the daily things that have to be done with regard, we have our CPA, our CPA in our finance office has to stop and do everything that she can do to do things like filing. And, you know, I'm sorry, yes, there is, there is an assistant in there, but when you start talking about the payroll generation, you talk about people wanting to come in and to borrow against their accounts or this, that, or the other. And I'm going to go ahead and tell you this, but our finance officer has to literally hide to get our audits done each year. Hide. I mean, that's a set. And of course, there's times, yeah, I mean, you have to look at it and understand why it is. And then, you know, we did get an exception this last time, and the reason for that was is that one of our departments, the RDA, one of those outsiders, was late getting their audit done, which had been done in what, how many years?
Long time ago.
I don't remember it ever being done, but that's one of the exceptions, but that's beside the point. But all I want to do tonight is to ask that this board give consideration to that. And I know exactly what that's going to look like, you know, I've, I've seen this and I understand it, I've just seen it for a while. I know that we've gone and tried to reassign staff there periodically based on tax season or whatever's going on. But I believe, from what I can see, you know, it's time for us to start looking for another certified person to be able to help get these things done so we can have more planning in place as we move along with that. So I've had my say-so with that. I hope that as we look at it, we can understand it, and I know that we've made some hard decisions about staffing and trying to do everything we can. And for about three and a half years we've done that, have we not? And try to understand about where the best way to streamline staffing is. Ms. Or.
How many county boards do we have right now?
I haven't even, I haven't slide some.
How many have, how many have one scanning one to count out of our time?
And it's coming around budget time. So, you know, when it comes to that issue, you know, it may need to revisit, but our abilities now are a lot harder than they were years, three years ago. And we need to, and I'm not saying it in a way that, you know, there's pretty air in there, but we've got to try and streamline it, we've got to strive to do the best we can. And I know where you stand on it, you and I have had conversations, and I know how this board feels about it collectively. So with that, I know that every time we have to make a decision, I turn to our finance officer. I turn to look to see about our solvency, I turn to look and see about how we're able to continue on. And it's not just, it's not just the finance office, it's been the departments in this county that have gone their distance to try and watch their budgets and be able to monitor and to watch within the budgets that have been allocated by this board. So with that, you know, I just wanted to put that thought out there during this period of time because we have kind of a light agenda for the regular meeting and that's, might happen, it might not, but I wanted to be sure while I had a moment to say that. So if anyone has any other feelings about that or other issues you might want to bring up at this time, please do so. All right, anyone in the public?
I have a question.
Okay.
I have to look into it.
Okay, that's what we need to do, we need to look into, and that's all, that's all I wanted to do tonight was to mention that. We have about 10 minutes, we go ahead and have a recess for about 10 minutes, everybody get their heads screwed on straight and we'll do that. I hope so. 10 minutes, we'll start sharp at 5:00.